An agenda, are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes. Actually, there are. A couple of changes.
Go ahead.
Number one, we have a board member that we need to swear in, and then we also need to appoint an MSBA delegate.
Right.
Do you want to make that all the same motion?
No motion for the swearing in.
Yeah.
Can the bell be broken?
It's standing.
That can stay or not.
Please hold your gloves.
She's receiving multiple.
You're so good at that.
It is customary in front of the wheel here.
Right in the middle.
Don't turn the wheel because it doesn't spin.
Raise your right hand. There you go. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Missouri, and that you will faithfully and impartially discharge the duties of a school director in and for the Willow Springs School District to the best of your ability according to law?
Yes, I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service, Debbie.
You're welcome.
All right, I will accept nominations for an MSBA delegate.
Debbie.
One nominee. Do you accept that nomination?
Yes.
Second.
Second. Is there any other nominations? Okay. Take a vote for Debbie to be the MSBA delegate.
Thank you guys for waiting on me.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Good. All right, let's go into the consent agenda. Are there any questions or discussion about any of the items on the consent agenda? Okay, I've received a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
Second. Okay. Call in favor.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Want to go into administrative reporting?
Let's do our senior projects.
Senior projects.
Yep. We want to recognize our top five senior projects. Mrs. Wilson is here with them, and we have four of those students present, and one of them will be presenting to you tonight. So I'll let them stand and give their name and their project, and you guys are welcome to ask any questions that you like before Tate gives his project. They're all graduated now, so we can't take back their diploma from the looks that they're giving me.
I'm Maddie Ford. My project was music medicine for the mind.
And Maddie, just remain standing for just a minute. Maddie has been to so many board meetings, but, and I know you guys have asked her questions in the past, but is there anything you'd like to ask about her presentation before we let her sit down?
Good job.
Thank you.
Fantastic.
I'm Isabel Autry, and my project was plush pals.
Good job, Isabel.
Thank you.
I'm Emma Spence. I did Wondering Words, and it was a dyslexia documentary. Thank you.
And now Tate, if you'd like to get up, we'll hear Tate's top presentation.
I feel a little overused.
No.
Best, great.
Here's your clip.
Let's see if this thing works.
Thank you for the support.
Yeah, yeah. Let's look at this. Is my school board ready? To many people, the church youth group is just another Sunday school class, or a Wednesday night gathering, or even an after-school club or get-together. Most people do not see it as a way in which youth can come to full faith and surrender to Christ. However, this is exactly how it should be seen, and most churches either understand that completely or do not understand it at all. My name is Tate Cochran, and I believe that youth ministry and its history, the way it is carried out, and its effects on relationships has had multiple effects, and it can continue to if it is centered on Christ. Now, my inspiration for this project comes from many things. For example, my inspiration comes from my history of being involved in church and being in a youth group. You see, in Willow Springs, a lot of the people in different churches know each other very well, and every once in a while, the youth in different churches come together for a big event, or conference, or something of that nature. And this has allowed me to see multiple youth groups, and it has allowed me to see both the positive traits of each of them, as well as the negative ones. My inspiration also comes from the numerous statistics out there that show that youth are either leaving the church entirely, or do not have a complete understanding of what true Christianity should look like. And this led me to do research into what churches can do to keep youth in the church. Now, if we're going to find out where we are with youth ministry, we need to know how it all started. See, youth ministry first started in England during the 1800s as a way for street children to receive proper education. And since Christianity was a huge part of society at the time, it was eventually added into this, and so this birthed the idea of Sunday school. Later on in the 1800s, this form of evangelism carried on into the United States, where the children of poor immigrant families were being brought in and taught the Bible, which was seen as the textbook for this form of education. And churches and evangelists did this in order to differentiate from the kind of education that children were receiving at the time in places like New York, where most of this was taking place. And in all of this, churches and youth group leaders have had multiple goals to teach their children. You see, in his book, When God Shows Up: A History of Protestant Youth Ministry in America, Mark Center III argues that youth ministry has existed in four cycles over the years. The first cycle, which existed from the mid to late 1800s, focused on the spiritual aspect of ministry. The second cycle, which existed from the late 1800s through the early 1900s, focused more on the education aspect. And the third cycle, which existed from the mid to late 1900s, focused more on evangelism and reaching unchurched youth. And the fourth cycle, Center argues, is the cycle we are currently living in, and it seeks to combine elements from the previous three cycles to create something new out of it. And the reason for saying this is that we can know where we are with youth ministry by knowing where we have been. And just as important to youth ministry is how it is carried out. You see, if done correctly, youth ministry can result in youth within the church maturing spiritually, and this is done through hearing the gospel in its fullest, receiving spiritual food from the Bible, and learning how to grow in their relationship with Christ. In my opinion, this is the best way to carry out youth ministry, but there are some churches who would say otherwise. See, there are some churches out there who think that youth ministry is all about having fun, while sometimes adding the Bible as a bonus. According to Andrew Root, a professor at Lutheran Seminary in St. Paul, they do this as if fun were a freedom, not a chain. Also, some youth groups are not explicitly connected to the churches they represent, and some only serve as organizations merely sponsored by the local church. But when the youth group is connected to the church on an intimate level, this can result in youth in the church growing closer in their relationship with more mature believers, and in turn, growing in their relationship with Christ. And when they do this, they learn that this is what it's all about, instead of just having fun, playing games, and getting a verse from the day. Also, youth ministry can have multiple effects on relationships within the church. You see, for example, when, through, youth in the church, in the church through interactions with peers can have lasting impacts on each other, and this is not something that can be typically found in most modern social settings. Also, youth within the church can grow in their relationships with adult believers, and when they grow in their relationship with more mature Christians, they learn how to grow in their relationship with both Christ and with people in general. And last but not least, youth ministry can result in children growing in their relationship with the Lord, which can last an entire lifetime. And when it does, they, youth can realize that it's not about them, but it's all about Him. Now, you'd think with all of this that most youth would want to stay in the church, right? Well, that's not always the case. You see, there have been many studies that show that right now, youth are currently leaving the church in droves. And according to a study by the Journal of Youth Ministry, about 78% of today's teenagers believe in God, and about 41% attend religious services. And yet, today's teenagers are twice as likely as adults to be atheists. Also, about 70% of today's teenagers have significant doubts about God and faith, and yet fewer than half of them talk with more mature believers about them. And to top it all off, about 66% of today's teenagers who are active in the church during high school will end up leaving the church after high school. So basically, a lot of youth will end up leaving the church after, after high school, and most of them will likely never come back. Now, there are a few factors leading to this taking place. One of these factors is what children are learning in public schools. Not necessarily what they're getting from their textbooks, but more so what they see from unbelieving youth that starts to influence this. You see, when a child grows up in a Christian home, they're not yet exposed to the ways of the world, and so whenever they see this through their peers in public school, it can be attractive to them because they do not know the long-term effects that sin can have on their lives. Also, a lot of public schools bring up questions about science and history, and when the church doesn't answer these questions in a biblical way, this can be a problem because there's now a conflict between what children are learning at school and what they're learning in church. And most youth will end up leaving the church, either because nobody has answered these questions, or because they've been too afraid to ask. And you may think that all hope is lost for youth ministry, but fortunately, there are many ways in which churches can help keep youth in the church. One of the ways they can do this is with the involvement of parents in the youth. You see, how somebody matures as a Christian is through the daily practices and disciplines of reading the Bible and praying together. And when this is done in the home, it really strengthens the mind because it helps youth see that, that church is not just something that they do on Sundays. Also, churches can help plant godly convictions into the minds of youth. And like I just said, when they do this, youth will, will learn that church is not just something they do on Sunday mornings or Wednesday nights, but instead, it becomes a way of life for them. And also, another way churches can help keep youth in the church is by preaching to them where the fight is. You see, nowadays, a lot of topics such as gender confusion and the dynamics of the family are taking over youth culture, and so when the church can apply the Word of God to certain areas such as those, youth will have a better understanding of them. They'll learn that the Bible has the answers to these questions that the world doesn't offer, and not only this, but it has the only solution to them. They'll learn that the Bible talks about forgiveness of sins and transformation through the whole gospel. And so whenever the church can learn to apply the Word of God to certain areas, then youth will have a better understanding of them, and therefore, want to stay committed to the church. Now, if you couldn't tell already, youth ministry is something I'm very passionate about. And so, for my product, I wanted to create something that would involve youth ministry. And so what I did was, I created a YouTube channel called Centered on Christ. And in this channel, I created a series called United for the Cross, in which I interviewed various pastors from my area about pressing issues in the modern church, particularly with youth. As you can see here, this is the homepage. For it, I had to create a banner for it, as well as a logo. And I did all this through a program called Canva, which my mentor helped me with. And once I did this, I sat down and messaged each of the six pastors I was interviewing personally, and asked them for permission to interview them, as well as to film them. I also gave them some starter questions to help them prepare for the interviews that was about to come. And so once I did this, I got right down to the interview process. And I did, and I filmed all of these, all of these in Innovation Hall's podcast room. And what I did was, I asked each of the pastors every question back to back, and filmed it all. And I did this with each of them over six different days during the month of October. And I was surprised to see that even though they all came from different churches, they all had very similar answers to each other. And, and this just goes to show how united they are on certain issues. And overall, it was a really good experience. So after I got done with interviewing, I got right down to the editing process. Before that, before that, I filmed some, a few more sections, like intro and outro segment, which was, as you can see right here, and then I got down to the editing process. Now, at the time, I didn't know too much about video editing, but thank goodness, my mentor did. And so she showed me the ropes of this editing software called DaVinci Resolve, and so I was able to get the editing done. And when I did, I released each of the videos over six different, over six weeks, on Friday afternoons, one video per week, and as of right now, the videos have over 500 views, and the channel has about 49 subscribers. Now, this may not seem like much, but it still gives me satisfaction knowing that people are watching these videos and listening to them. Now, this process, though rewarding, didn't come without its challenges. One of the challenges I faced was communication. See, this process allowed me to do, it had me doing a lot of communicating with both my mentor and with the pastors involved, and since I'm really not the best at talking to people, this was kind of a challenge for me, so, and it was something that I had to overcome. Another challenge I faced was my lack of knowledge in the area of video editing. Now, I have tried to put YouTube, videos on YouTube in the past, but I've never actually tried to edit them to be good enough for YouTube. But, like I said earlier, my mentor was very well-versed in that field, and so she was able to help me overcome that challenge. And another challenge I faced with this project was my busy schedule. You see, I did most of this during the month of October, which is the height of marching band season. And so that, combined with all of the busy schoolwork I had, made it hard for me to get all of this done. And sometimes, it would lead me to have anxiety while trying to get it done. But the fact that I was doing this for a good purpose, and that I was doing this all for God's glory, led me to learn how to persevere through that, and to finish this project as best as I could. And that, I think, is the best lesson I learned from this. See, youth ministry has had its many ups and downs over the years, and there are still some churches who don't seem to fully understand the importance of ministering to young people. But fortunately, there are many ways in which churches can help, can help you see that church is not just something that they do on Sunday mornings or Wednesday nights. By connecting with the parents in the church and learning how, and giving youth godly convictions about what is right and wrong, by doing, by doing that, youth ministry can continue to prosper as the church continues to reach people far from God. And it can carry on in great ways if it results in youth fully trusting in God and handing everything in their lives over to Him, and that is how it should be seen. Thank you. Do you have any questions? Wow.
Any questions for Tate?
Who was your mentor?
Her name was Amy Hines.
Oh.
You, you know.
I know.
Okay. Any more questions?
What about, you think it's worth it, all the, all the hard work?
Yeah.
Who's the, your favorite to interview pastor-wise?
Ah.
That's a dangerous.
That's a hot seat.
Honestly, as far as who is, who is my, my favorite in terms of the interview, probably have to be David Lovin.
Can't imagine that.
What are your future plans, Tate?
Well, I'm, in the fall, I'm, I'm going to be going to College of the Ozarks. I'm going, I'm going to be studying music, but in the future, I hope to, to get more involved with youth ministry, because as I was doing my research, I realized that this was something I might want to continue learning about and to continue getting involved, getting involved in. So I hope to get involved with some more of that in the future.
Like you're going to the right place.
Thank you, got it calling.
Well, I just wanted to say, this was my first, I'll sheepishly admit that this was my first time going to the senior project night up there and getting to see some of the, all of the stuff that was out there. And it was, for me, it was a really awesome experience. It was, it was a good thing. So I look forward to next year and the other projects. And I know, you know, there's some graps and grumbles, but everything that they had presented there was awesome. It looked really neat.
It's a great night. Kudos to Tate. This was like, what, two weeks ago now? And he's the only one that has to come back and boom. And remember all of that, so it's a good job to remember that.
And I really only, only practice this again for two days.
Hey, that's two days more than I would practice.
Of the two weeks I had to prepare, I only prepared for two days.
Okay. All right. We want to say congratulations Clayton Wake, who's not here, was the other top five member, and all of our seniors. Just, I mean, it's, it's like Matt said, it's my favorite night of the year every, every year, because all of our seniors do such a phenomenal job, and it's just, there's a lot of pride that night. And thanks to Mrs. Wilson for all she does to coordinate and organize all of that. So I'm sure we'll have other good ones next year, right?
And very well dressed.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Very sharp.
Okay.
All right. Thank you, guys.
Good job.
Give this to anybody?
I will take that back. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Good job.
Good seeing you, Maddie.
Thank you.
Say bye to Maddie.
You have to go work anyway, don't you? Is this the farewell?
You did, Caleb. Good seeing you.
Yeah. Before we get to the admin reports, I just have a few opening statements. The C-Sep goals, I always like to point those out. Those are in front of you. Senate Bill 727 has been the hot issue in education the last week or so. Oh, really, for longer than that. I'm going to address several aspects of 727 in later presentations, but that did get the governor's signature despite a lot of people in public education's best efforts to get him to veto that bill. It did pass. And so what that means for us, we're just kind of now starting to unravel all of that. And we'll give you our best guess as to what that might look like for the R4 school district, but I do want to let you know that that, that's coming in, in some of our, our presentations tonight. And in the sped trailers, the two trailers up there, Officer Cunningham and I have been working on trying to find some good way to get rid of those and also benefit the school a little bit. We've been unsuccessful to this point. We would like to put those out for bid. That needs board approval before I can put those out for bid, so I'll be asking for your approval tonight to put that open to the community, to, to try to get those out of our campus so that we can put some, put some parking in there. And we've got, we're still working on that big shift of moving everybody around, but the trailer is moving. That's kind of the next step in that process, so I'd like to get going on that as quickly as possible. So I'll be asking for that tonight.
You'll, you'll need a motion for that?
Yes.
To put those out for bid?
Yes. And we can slide into administrative reports. Mr. Rogers is not here. If you want me to, I'll start with his.
Okay.
My computer. Andrew, what did you do? Hold on. Okay, I don't know what that was. The elementary, Mr. Rogers couldn't be here tonight. They're starting summer school May 28th. We're all starting summer school May 28th through June 20th. They've been having a lot of field trips. Elementary is a fun place to be at the end of the year, and I was able to walk through and watch a lot of fun stuff going on. But kindergarten had Park Day. They went to the Star Theater. First grade, movies and bowling. Second went to a small Civil War cave, which is, that's a cool place to go if you haven't been there. Third grade, Wonders of Wildlife. Fourth grade went to the Fantastic Caverns. We've been doing that for a long time. I went to Fantastic Caverns back in the day. The Hines Farm. That's right. Kelly Hines brings, that's kind of a cool thing for the fourth grade. He, he brings them out in the, in the spring and shows them the planning process, and then he'll bring them back and shows them the harvest in the fall. So kind of a double, a double trip there. Fourth grade had their talent show, and there were some amazing talents. I think there was some recorders being played out of a nose. I'm not going to say who, but some pretty amazing talent in our, our fourth grade. And Mrs. Sarder's class won the G&amp;W receipt winners. We appreciate our partnership with G&amp;W on those receipts, and they get back to the school that way. So, good times in the elementary. Of course, they had their Field Day and everything else, so elementary wrapped up another, another year. And I think Mr. Cochran is representing the middle school tonight.
Yep.
You gotta stand up, Mr. Cochran.
Oh, I do.
Yeah.
In front? Yep. I'm starting.
Sorry.
I know. I'm sorry.
Exciting things in the middle school. Of course, we got, just wrapped up field trips and everything. Fifth grade went down to Mammoth, and that was an excellent trip. Got to go on that. And we did a walk tour where they did a bingo card, and we found snakes and frogs and turtles and everything else, and then got to go in the train depot and kind of visit that, and then went over to the fish hatchery. And so it was a really cool trip. Sixth grade went to Twin Pines, and I didn't go on that one, but I heard there was a lot of fish that was caught. And so, good times. Seventh grade went to Fantastic Caverns, and I got to go on that. That was my first time, so I got to go through Fantastic Caverns. Eighth grade went to Branson, to the IMAX, and had a really good time. And they kind of got to visit and kind of spend their last hurrah in the middle school before we had a big send-off for them on the last day. So it was a really good, really good time. Getting, wrapping up, we did map testing, went really well. And of course, we have to map test every grade level, so that was, Ms. Henry did a really good job there. Teachers did a really good job. I-ready results, I have those. And teachers, it's all on the teachers. And I think every grade level, we move students up from our pre-test to the end of the year. And so that's, that's a good testament to our teachers and the hard work they're doing through our RTI, which is, just finished up our first year of the RTI and those tier-level interventions. And I think really, you know, spending our level two RTI time, our tier two, really helped us to focus in on what we're actually doing in tier one. And I think that went a long ways with those competencies, what competencies we're teaching, how we're teaching them, and ways that we can improve teaching those. Of course, there's always improvements to be made. We're not, still not where we want to be, but we're trying to move that direction and get there. We welcomed our fourth grade students. Transition Day, so we got to bring them in. They get to spend some time in the middle school, eat lunch, play on the playground, visit all their teachers for next year, so that was really a fun time. Our student leadership did a fabulous job. Ms. Henry kind of organized all that. We had student leaders leading them on tours. At the same time, they stayed with their groups the entire time, did a fabulous job there. Our attendance field trip, we did that. Ninety-eight percent. We went to Noblet, had a fabulous time. I think the kids just really, really enjoyed it. Mr. Gumm went, taught map reading skills when he was teaching contour lines and elevations and, and everything. Mr. Webb cooked for us. Hot dogs. Josh Owens took, we did some cave exploration with some groups, so did some fishing. Kids just had a great time at that, just being outside and being able to enjoy that. And now we got summer break. We're getting ready, gear up for summer school, and things are looking really good in the middle school. Any questions? You know, your numbers coming in the middle school for summer. For summer, I don't. I haven't seen those yet.
Hey, I, I like the variety of field trips that you guys took. I mean, it sounds like a neat lineup. And then my daughter got to go to Mammoth Springs there, and she thoroughly enjoyed it, had a good time there, so.
You know what I liked about most of them? They were all educational.
Right.
You know, and I think that was really good. Kids learned a lot, plus, you know, still had, had fun, you know?
Yeah.
Yep. Anybody else?
Yeah.
You tell me.
We should have gotten those shirts for the board. If you haven't seen the, the senior shirts, which Schmidt are you?
Yeah.
That's a, that's a great shirt.
I've heard we need to make some new ones without the senior stuff in the back.
Yeah.
It's been busy since the last time we were here. Prom, senior projects, senior trip, FBLA State, FFA State, Transition Day, where the eighth graders came over, got to run their schedule for next year. And we get, it's good for them. It also helps us figure out things that we didn't think of, that we need to, to work on for them. for them. Tennis, we had three people qualify for sectionals. Will Clarkston in singles, and Aiden Stewart, Montana Colts in doubles. They got to go to the sectional tennis matches. We had three girls qualify for sectionals in track, Melina Wilson, McKenzie Collins, and Naveah Duggar, and then Melina and McKenzie qualified for the state meet, which will be Friday. And then softball won districts, which is scheduled to play tomorrow in the state quarterfinals, but we'll see what the weather does. Baseball starts districts tomorrow. They were supposed to start today, we got postponed. Golf won the district there at the state meet and currently tied for second in state. They finish up tomorrow. We had retirement reception. We had Mr. Kuhlmeier retiring, Mr. Jackson retiring, Leitha Smith retiring, and we got that last Wednesday. We did EOC testing. Coming up, summer school, we've already mentioned. Boy, I can't read that. Oh yeah, all those are coming up, we mentioned. We're starting something new in all the buildings. We are starting an administrative internship program, and we selected three interns for next year. One at the high school, Gary Spencer, middle school James Lee, and elementary Ashley Johnson. And they may mix around and get a variety of experience. They'll spend some time, I think, with Ms. Barker in special ed, but it's an opportunity to give our teachers a chance to see what it's like in the administrative roles as assistant principal, principal, special education, those type of things. It's kind of like student teaching for an admin, and gives them an opportunity to say, hey, I think I like this, and maybe I want to do this in the future, or a chance to say, nope, that's not what I thought it was, I don't want any part of that. So it's something new we're trying, and kind of a grow your own administrator type thing, so.
And is that for a full year, school year?
Full school year, yeah. They'll do that kind of on their planned time. It's kind of a volunteer thing, not a paid thing, but gives them some opportunities to learn about those administrative roles. And then hopefully, it goes well, and it's something we can continue to do in the future. And then on Friday, I walked in the office, and Amanda said, David Evans is on the phone for you. I'm like, what the heck is he calling for? And you know, we had David Evans on campus a couple months back. We visited with Carla Esslinger. We've had lots of people, and those discussions are around our CTE programs and some things that we want to do on campus. And when we had David Evans here, he said, the state has some money. If you want something, ask for it now, because after this year, the state's not going to have money. And so, Dr. Spencer and I and Josh, and really the write-up, I think was mostly Josh, wrote something up like they told us to do. We sent it to David Evans, and he put it to the budget guy. And when he called yesterday, he said, today's our final vote on the budget. We won't be adding anything or subtracting anything, and there's $500,000 for Will Spring School District to finish moving our ag program, our fax program, moving our shop program, getting rid of the sped trailers, and moving those classes to the B building and renovating that. So as long as the governor doesn't line item veto it, we have $500,000 coming to us to finish those programs. So that was a pretty good, pretty good phone call. And I sent Josh a text Friday, and he texted me back yesterday morning and said, call when I got a chance. So I got to tell him and Mac that yesterday on the phone. So when he gets back tomorrow, we're going to try to get in touch with David Evans and Carla Esslinger and make sure that we're doing what we need to, and we'll thank all the people, you know. Wendell Bailey, there's been a big push to get those CTE programs, get something in those buildings. The city, working with us has been great. David Evans, Travis Smith, Carla Esslinger, all those people. We want to thank them for their support, and thank the governor. Don't veto that. Send us that money.
Overlook that.
So that's something exciting that we're looking forward to, and hopefully that goes through without any issues, and we can use that money to finish those projects up.
Mr. Schmidt is modest, but he's really the spearhead behind all that, and we really appreciate his work.
Josh has been a big part of that. We've kind of worked together doing a lot of that, and it's not something that one of us could do alone, and we've got to work together to get those things done, so.
Any questions?
That was a great report.
I would add, not to really anybody's report, but like, the more time you go, you spend up here, the more time you realize there's things going on you didn't even know of. I went to my daughter's awards banquet ceremony thing for fourth grade, and I had no idea, like, and she was a part of it, and I had no idea, but like, the fourth graders learned like, flag etiquette, how to hang the flag, when to put it down, how to fold it, how to store it, all of those different things. I had no idea, you know, and I asked her, oh yeah, and she went through the whole deal. I was like, did you ever even think to tell me that? She said, no. So you learn those things. Also, like, how competitive those kids read to gain points, like, AR points, that's a major deal. And so you, every time you're up here, that, like, I didn't know they were doing that in the fourth grade. That's great.
Well, we try to give as much as we can in these reports, but there is so much that's going on, we can't hit all of it, so I appreciate it.
Yeah, I mean, it was, but it's funny that your own kid won't, you know, she's been doing that all year and won't tell you that.
She assumed you did.
I think the elementary leadership team, they put the flag up and down every day.
Yeah, I mean, I didn't, and then, and I didn't know that my other daughter was like part of helping with the transition day, you know, bringing, I didn't know that either, you know, so anyway, a lot of stuff going on, lots of stuff.
Maybe you mentioned Calvin Wood and the county commission as well as part of that. I'm sure there's hundreds of other people, but.
Yep, that's a big part of it. Those ARPA funds were really, really important in getting that off the ground. Yes, definitely. Okay, Mr. Parker?
Most of my stuff in the other box has stayed the same. The items of importance are in the first box. Last month, whenever we met, we were talking about how many evaluations we had completed for the year and where we were standing. At that time, I think we were around 87, I think, last month, in April, at April board meeting. We have finished the year, we had 113 special education referrals for the year. Out of those, we had 37 students that did not qualify. Three of those, 113 moved, but we were in the process of doing an evaluation, and we have three that are still in process that, we have a student that is moving, a new kindergarten student that is moving to us from another state, that we want the evaluation to be completed before she starts in the fall. It was very important. A parent had contacted me ahead of time and said I have a kiddo, and we want our eyes on that. So we had made arrangements during spring break to, her spring break in Michigan, to have her down here, so we have her place where she needs to be when school starts, and a state school student is one of those. And then we had a referral, actually, the last week of school. It was a, one of our employees' children that had made a referral, so we're still wrapping those up. But overall, 113, only 37 out of all of those did not meet eligibility for services, which, you know, still, you know, leaves frustration for teachers that, you know, just know that all of our kids need help, and we can sympathize with that, that not every kid qualifies, and we do have awesome systems of support in all of our buildings to help out with that. I know the majority of the ones that don't have been, if they have not already been an intervention, that we have made arrangements for certain things, such as bringing up the evaluation, give us some red flags if there may have been concerns in language, that they've not had intervention in the area of language before, so we have started that process. We had some students that were referred for counseling out of our evaluation. There were some mental health concerns, so we have utilized some of our resources that we have on campus to assist these students in other ways, too, so. And then we worked with the interventionist as well to make sure that what supports need to go from here. We have a whole lot of data on this kid, now what do we need to do for them? So we've been able to communicate that with them of, like, here's our next steps, these are the areas that we've pinpointed, how you can help them further, even though they don't meet eligibility. So it has been a very, very busy year in special ed. I'm excited that we were able to, I guess, soon hire our new special ed staff. We were able to get to quality candidates, one with experience for early childhood. And then out of our Grow Your Own program, Becky Murphy to step in for an opening that we have. One of the other ladies was here before and did her student teaching in first grade and wanted to be in special ed, so it was nice to have her seek us out and want to come back to be there. It was very exciting to have her back in place. I think that's about it. We have lots of PD going on this summer. I have teachers that, I have a teacher that's doing professional development next couple of days, and doing things throughout their summer to learn new skills before the new school year ends, too, or before the new school year begins. You have any questions?
37 kids that was referred did not qualify.
Out of 113 that were, 113 total for the year, 37 of those did not meet eligibility.
So why are they getting referred to you and then not, I mean, just kick them out and say, you're wrong?
Well, if they, well, if, out of the 113, we go through the evaluation process, depending on the areas of concern, we evaluate in the areas that were brought to us of concern from the teacher. There's some paperwork they filled out, and they bring us data on, you know, it could be a variety of reasons, a struggling reader, struggling with math, struggling with attention. And so based on the areas of concern is where we do our evaluation, and that also determines what assessments that we have to do. Some of those may be just speech concerns, where they had problems with articulation, and some of them may have been suspected learning disabilities. And so at the completion of doing the evaluations, to determine whether or not those areas that were suspected were identified, we follow the Missouri criteria, which is also in our district plan, on eligibility. And if they meet the eligibility according to that criteria, then they are placed, or say that they qualify for special education services, and we develop IEPs. If they do not meet that criteria based on, based on the standards and indicators that the state set for us, then that's how we make the determination that they don't.
I would think that if a teacher sent that child to you, that teacher spent time with that child and felt that they needed help, so we didn't just go by the state and just say, we're not going to help that kid because he didn't qualify? And there's almost 40 of them out of 113?
Depending on the area, depending on the area of eligibility. Each criteria is just a little bit different. If it's a student with a speech impairment, for example, with a speech impairment, in order for a student to receive services for speech, there has to be a one-year delay in the expected sounds that they can make for that age. And if they don't have that one-year delay, then the state says that we cannot provide speech services for them, but we can provide intervention. That we, we don't provide a speech IEP, but we do provide intervention, but there has to be that one-year delay according to the state before we can provide those services. If it's a student that we suspected an intellectual disability, the state criteria is that they have to have an IQ score that's a 70 or below, and two adaptive behavior scores, which is another assessment that are also a 70 or below. And if they don't have those numbers, then they don't meet the Missouri criteria, and we cannot say that they have a disability. There are a couple of areas of professional judgment. One of them is language impairment, and one of them is young child developmental delay, and then the other is specific learning disabilities. We have actually used professional judgment, I think, for two or three students this year that were within three or four points of the discrepancy. For a student with a learning disability with the model that we use, and we had looked at using a different model for this year, and the consensus at the beginning of the year, we had looked at using the lack of response to intervention model. And with that model of determining if a student has a learning disability, if a student made any progress with intervention, any progress with intervention, they would not have qualified. Most students make progress with intervention, even a little bit. And so it was going to keep, we felt like it was going to keep more kids from getting help, or more kids from qualifying if they made any progress, because most students do even a little. With the discrepancy method, I'm back to the other way, the response to intervention, there are only two districts in the entire state of Missouri that use that method, the lack of response to intervention, because of that very reason. They say not enough kids qualify. And so that kind of gives us red flags, too. If only two districts in Missouri are utilizing that, and I had wanted to go visit them, and I had asked Mr. Rogers, most of them are up in North Kansas City area, to go visit those districts and take a look at their model and method, because if we were going to go that route, I wanted to see what you're doing and how to do it, and that way we could do a good job of doing it, too. But all of the other districts around are like, don't do that, not enough kids qualify. It's going to make teachers more frustrated, because kids do make progress, and so they're not going to qualify, and it's not going to solve your frustration of, when enough kids aren't getting help, you're going to have frustrated teachers. And we were really trying to move away from that teacher frustration piece. So we did stay with the discrepancy method for eligibility, and with that, there is an element of professional judgment. Our training that we went through with our compliance consultants have told us that if it's within a few points of eligibility, the discrepancy, those 22 points, then you can use professional judgment to say that, yes, based on, they were really close on the assessment, and you have this other data. You have that the kid did not respond to intervention. You have the kid scored poor on I Ready scores. You have that the kid is failing classes, then you can use professional judgment to say that that student had a disability. And we've done that in, like I said, two or three different cases this year, because it was all, the assessment was really close, and we had those other pieces of information to support it as well.
But of these 37, they got nothing?
They did not, but it wasn't even close. Like, it wasn't even close on discrepancy, like, or like.
Is there a follow-up procedure for that? I mean, do you look at these kids down, I mean, is there a timeframe or something that you reevaluate these kids, or?
If the interventionist bring it to, bring it to us again. Some of the, and I know from working here in my fourth year, that the kids that don't qualify first round, especially if they're referred early, it is really, really difficult for kids in first, and sometimes even second grade, to have a discrepancy, just because the skill gap. And when I'm talking about discrepancy, how that's determined, we give an IQ test, and then the student's IQ, their overall total IQ, average is 100. So the student is given an IQ test, and then the Missouri discrepancy method is 1.5 standard deviations, or 22 points. So they take the student's overall IQ, for example, if it was average and it was a 100, and subtract 22 points from that. So their criterion score is what it's called on an academic assessment, so we give a standardized academic assessment. And any area of disability, for the areas of specific learning disability that a student would score at a 78 or below, if their IQ was a 100, would mean that they would have a learning disability in that area, or have skill gaps where they're not functioning at their cognitive ability. So then whenever you look at the numbers, the discrepancy numbers, basic reading skills, reading fluency, written expression, reading comprehension, math calculation, math problem solving, listening comprehension, and oral expression are the areas of learning disability. So we assess in those areas that were identified as weaknesses, and if there's any area that's that 22-point difference on that student's IQ test and the discrepancy, then we say they have a learning disability. So.
So, I don't mean to step on your question.
Oh, you're fine.
No. You have a court, you go right ahead.
I guess my question is, is who provides the support for those kids when they go back to the classroom and they don't qualify? If the teacher has referred that there's an issue?
It depends on the grade level. Yeah, it depends on the grade level. In the elementary, it's a combination usually of intervention if we're looking at a student with a learning disability. If it's academic needs, then it's usually the intervention teacher.
So there is some form of support for these two? They go back into the classroom and they're not just, are they, they're not dumped on the teacher and say, maybe they don't qualify?
No, they still stay in the tiered intervention system, depending on the grade level. Third and fourth grade, they have chosen to utilize their interventionist for that. Kindergarten, first and second grade, their interventionist provides support, and the special ed teachers provide support. We had offered that help this year, and Mrs. Marks and her parents, they help students who don't even have IEPs. And we had offered that to third and fourth grade, but they wanted to use their system, and we didn't want to step on their toes and say, but we offered help for them. And I know that Mrs. Marks, like, with second grade, during their reading instruction time, like, they have a group of kids that Mrs. Marks. like they, they have a group of kids that Mrs. Marks pulls and sees and then another teacher, the interventionist pulls and sees. So, and then we also utilize our paras to do that, whether it's like working on alphabet or working on sight words, that they utilize our support as well by choice. And we had offered that help for everyone if they wanted us to, to be of assistance too. So, like, I think we still all wrap our supports around them even though, even though they don't. With middle school and high school, we do the push-in style there as well. And so even students that don't meet eligibility, we have them in the supported classes where either a special ed teacher or a para is in the classroom with a regular teacher. So they still get incidental benefit from having other people around them to help them. And then they also have the tiered, the tiered intervention tiers and they do the same thing at the high school as well.
And the way it's grouped in the middle school, our special ed teachers, they do a great job of even helping those students that are on the low.
Yeah, our role, our role when we push in, the special ed teacher and the paras role when we push into classes and help, we're there to help all kids. Like we have, we have students that are identified as special education students. And if there are other kids that need help, we help all students that are in the classroom and not just special ed students, so.
When those, when those students, were you done?
Okay.
I'm just, I'm just in it now.
When, when those students are sent and they are being evaluated, and you said some of those are like a judgment call, if you will, are they being evaluated, like if it's a high school student by the high school team or how?
Who's evaluating?
Yeah, like who's kind of, I mean-
The referrals made, the referral is typically made. There can be two types of referrals, a parent referral, they can call and make a referral or a district referral where the teacher has provided misinformation with concerns and we take their referral. Basically, anytime a teacher has come to us with a concern all year, whether the data was perfect or not, we've tested the kid.
And is that, but is that done by like the, the grade level team or the team that's-
Does the testing?
Yes, as far as like, or is that you or is it the, you and a combination of the, them as well?
It is, our, our school has an assessment team. You have to be certified to administer cognitive assessment and train to give academic assessment. And so it's by our school psych examiners. And I'm one of those, Mrs. Altermat is one of those and Amy Pollard. And you have to have a Missouri school psych examiner certification to administer IQ tests. The academic assessment, you don't have to have a psych examiner certification, but you do have to have training on the assessment that you administer. So the specific training, we either use the Wyatt for or the Woodcock Johnson for assessments to do the academic testing. And so we have been trained, we've had to go somewhere and be trained on how to administer and determine those assessments.
And when those students fall into the, kind of the judgment, then the three of you guys make that call?
No, the professional judgment piece, like as a team, after the assessment's completed by us. But then after the, after the assessment process is completed, then we schedule a meeting with the team. The team is consisted of the general ed teacher, a special ed teacher, the people that do the assessment, the parent, sometimes the interventionist. It's a whole team of people and we sit down and look at the information and say, hey, based on this, this is where we're at, this is the criteria. And what does the team feel like the decision should be made?
The best move.
Yes. Ultimately, and it's not a majority vote on, on eligibility. Ultimately, at the end of that evaluation process, your local education authority, your LEA of the meeting, which is typically myself or someone who's been trained to be an LEA, you have the ultimate decision because you're the one who has to answer compliance questions to the state. We, every three years, we have to send in X and O files to the state and they have to review our processes. This year they looked at 20 files and they all come back just fine that, that our processes and they were approved to be in compliance out of 20 files out of our students this year to make sure that we were or were not following the rules and following eligibility criteria. It's a, you know, it's under kind of a microscope versus our, based on our decisions, we have to send it in and they look at us and say, and last year when they looked at our files, we had four indicators. One of them was based on a student that we qualified as a student with an intellectual disability that said we should not have qualified them because the observation we did in the classroom didn't show a weakness in, in adaptive behavior. So we had to do corrective action on that and send in five more files of students we evaluated that showed that we did it the right way. And so like all of those processes and decisions are reviewed by the state every so often to make sure that we're following the rules. So beyond the fact that we have to make tough decisions and sometimes they are hard and, and hard decisions and, and not, I'm not saying not what's best for the kid, but a decision that we know the kid's struggling and we want to help them in every way we can. If they don't meet that criteria, then, then, then they don't. And, and, yeah, it's, they're very hard decisions and very, you know, hard conversations to have sometimes. But I do feel like the fact that out of 113, that only 37 did not qualify. And like I said, not all of those students were students with intellect, were students with learning disability. Some of those were speech, some of them were other areas, language impairment, things like that. But we, we try hard and make, and make heartfelt decisions that we are, that we are following the rules to the best of our ability with that little caveat of professional judgment. If it's within a few points and we have that other supporting data that we've placed kids because they're just a few points away, that we feel like we've made, we've made right decisions that follow the rules of eligibility.
That's almost a third that didn't qualify. That's a big number to me.
Well, how, how does that compare to last year's numbers? Do you have any idea?
I have it on the spreadsheet I can look at. Can I give you an answer in just a minute, whenever, if you go on and come back later? Because it is on the spreadsheet that I can go back and look at.
If anybody else wants to know, I'll make it.
Yeah, I can tell you.
We can double back too?
Yeah, sure. Do you have any other questions for me? I know a few years ago, I think my first year maybe, I don't think you were superintendent yet, I did kind of a board presentation on the, on like specific learning disability, intellectual disability. What was the other one? Maybe other health impairment. On, I, we looked at the standards and indicators and then I give you some example files and example assessments. And we looked at them and why a student didn't qualify and didn't qualify based off the standards and indicators. And it's a lot to soak in whenever you're looking at it. It's a lot to soak in and a lot to understand when you're following those. But if that's something, I mean, it takes me-
Might help us understand.
Yeah, it takes me like 20 minutes or so to, to hit the high points of going through something like that. If that's something that you'd like me to do sometime. And seeing the process and actually seeing, you know, like seeing the data, seeing a sample set of scores, seeing what the standards and indicators look like and how you apply those usually helps, helps it make sense. So I don't care to do that sometime if you'd like me to.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you for-
You're welcome.
Going through that.
We'll double back to you.
Okay.
After, towards the end of the meeting. Golden's back.
I'm back.
In person.
In person. It has been a while since I've been here in person, so I am glad to be back. So, let's start things out, sports, Mr. Schmidt did cover a lot of it. Montana, Kotein, Stewart did win their doubles match and the district championship. Mr. Schmidt said when they're going to play it again. But softball girls, district champions, props to them. They might play Houston tomorrow. And if you know me well enough, you know that's going to be a really hard game for me to watch.
So who are you pulling for?
Yeah, there's the question of, yeah.
Really?
It better be Marina, hopefully. Anyways, they might play at 4:30 tomorrow. And if they do play, they'll have a parade down Main Street at 3 o'clock, so I hear. And Melan Wilson interact, she did, she did break school record for the 400, so good to her, props to her. She's been working for that for a long time. So, club news, FBLA, we did have FBLA state. That was a sort of long week that started off the week, like I said last time. Prom, FBLA and FFA, huge compilation. But three groups placed in the top 10 in the state at the conference. Matty Poor placed 10th in organizational leadership. Daniel Jacoblin placed ninth in intro to information technology. And the sales presentation team of Alex Moore, Nolan Perkins and Jackson Lee placed seventh in the state. So, props to them, but that was about all the FBLA did this month. It's, we're getting towards the end of school year, so everything's kind of wrapping up, kind of easing down. But then there was FFA. FFA was a lot of stuff, getting everything sent out there before we all get out of school. We also had the state leadership conference right after FBLA. And Katie Spence placed sixth in the state in the creed speaking category. There's over 360 schools in the state that teach that category and have that contest. And for her to place sixth, huge accomplishment, better than I ever did in that contest. Agmech and Dairy Foods both placed 15th in the state. And Entomology placed 17th, which those were great performances as well. And Melana Wilson and Jarrett Lindsay did receive their state degree, which is an accomplishment less than 1% of FFA members ever achieve. And I'm sure you've heard about the mullet, so that's just a whole nother contest. Talk to me about that after if you want to. We also attended the Area 13 banquet, which Willow Springs absolutely knocked out of the park. I mean, a lot of our teams all received awards, had a lot of people get awards, whether it be proficiency awards or contest awards. And we were really close to doing better than West Plains. So maybe we can pass that mark next year. But for being a lot smaller than them and competing with them, that was a huge achievement to us. Probably one of our best years we've had in a while.
You got president, didn't you?
Area president, yes. I finally was put in as area president. So huge accomplishment in that, proud of myself for that. Great team, I'm so excited for this year. We're going to have a lot of fun. And to celebrate all of that, FFA banquet was last week. I unfortunately was unable to attend, however, I know, I'm sure a few of you probably went and I've heard some good things about it, so great things about that. STCLA has been really busy. Mrs. Ryan has been putting together a lot of shirts for other people, so they haven't been doing too much. They had their state leadership conference a few months prior. But they did help out at senior project night and they served a lot of food to the teachers, so good stuff on them. All of our clubs are really active, but like I said, end of the school year, we're finally settling down, moving into that summer break. And some of us will be active a little bit, but it is nice to get a break sometimes, I'm sure all of us know that. Mr. Crocken covered most of it in the middle school. The only other thing that I know about is middle school was awarded their character awards for the fourth quarter. So good to hear that from them. And I don't know much about elementary, but a lot of field trips, like always, always a good thing. I do know, however, West Plains Bank did surprise the district staff with cookies to celebrate National Teacher Appreciation Week. So, good thing on them, really nice to celebrate our teachers, they do so much for us. So eating some of those little cookie can do a lot. Comments and concerns in the district? Like I've said multiple times, end of the school year, a lot of the students were just ready to get on out of here. So, we couldn't care about what was going on. I haven't really had many other, from the student perspective, there's not much concern. It's just be done, get into summer. But I haven't really had any other comments or concerns other than the Wednesday night issue, which was talked about last month, that has continued. And since I wasn't there last week or last month's meeting, I am glad and I'm definitely open to take questions on that if you have any. Otherwise, that is all I have.
Good job.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you.
Gifted?
Gifted. Mrs. Mayberry is, is not able to be with us tonight, so I have her presentation that I will read for you while you look at some, some nice pictures of kids doing good things. Forty-seven students receiving gifted services through our CAT program. Ended the school with 45. One student moved and one student chose another elective, but 45 students district-wide in CAT. Twenty students referred for gifted testing this year, either through teacher or parent referral or the SAGES test. In October, Mrs. Brower and Mrs. Mayberry screened all first graders using that test and it identifies students as likely or highly likely qualified for CAT. Mrs. Brower shared this data, four students were identified by SAGES, SAGES as highly likely and two of the four moved before testing and the other two qualified for the rest of the testing. Teacher forms were sent out in December. Teachers can put up a student for the gifted program as well. Student score is 80% on the teacher evaluation form. They get permission to test and then those students start in the second semester. New thing for our CAT program this year is Beta Club. That's a nationwide organization and just a really good fit with our CAT program. Seventh grade students, it's kind of a pilot year, so Mrs. Mayberry started with seventh grade students. They competed in the regional beta competition in Branson. Students entered Quiz Bowl and service learning together as a team. And then we had entries in digitally enhanced photography, color photography, jewelry making, mixed media art, solo dance and spelling bee. For their service learning, students went to munch and helped bag food for families in our communities. There's the picture there with our esteemed president, Mr. Gump. Mrs. Ryan allowed students to help serve during the Veterans Day breakfast and they helped run the Change for Change in Uganda challenge during the month of January, which was a, a big success. Avery Foster placed second in digitally enhanced photography. And Adeline Seiler placed fourth in solo dance. Those girls both qualified for Nationals in Savannah, Georgia. So that is a, that is a really big accomplishment. Alan also received a golden ticket to be a premier performer at the opening ceremonies in Nationals. So next year we hope to expand Beta to the other grade levels now that Mrs. Mayberry kind of has a plan and sees what that entails, we're going to expand that. And then this last semester, she was able to observe several other programs in their gifted styles. She went to Mountain Grove, West Plains, Mountain View. And she wants to keep collaborating with these schools and just a great learning experience for her. She's doing a really good job with our CAT program. And that's a program that really we don't hear a lot about on a, on a monthly basis for sure. But those kids do some really cool things. And that doesn't even get into just the, the weekly CAT stuff that they get to do in the classroom and the projects and things that they work on. So I know our kids are, are excited and Mrs. Mayberry's doing a really good job with our CAT program.
And we have a Beta Club in high school as well, is that correct?
We do.
Is that, that's relatively new?
It's very new, first year. We did that this year and that was, opened it up, Mr. Schmidt might have to help me, for former gifted kids because we don't have CAT in high school. So that's a way that our high school kids can still kind of have a, have a foot in the door in the CAT program and then maybe some other students we lead up to.
Yeah, I think it was unlimited, kind of a tested out, see how it was. And I think then opened up and some weren't actually.
Did results.
Yeah. Lots of participation. All right.
I have your answer if you want to do that before you-
Go for it.
Okay. Last year, the 22, 23 school year, we had 81 referrals and 30 of those did not qualify last year.
So almost half didn't qualify last year.
Yeah. Within 10 or so, yeah. It was 81 referrals and 30.
What was it this year?
Thirty-seven.
Thirty-seven.
113.
113.
113.
113 and-
Thirty-seven.
So trending, trending towards more of 3% of students qualify.
The other, we've asked this question at our-
Thirty-seven percent last year, 33% this year.
Yeah. We've asked this question at our special ed director's meeting on what, what they see in trends of how many qualify on your referrals that you get. And most districts are, from our last meeting, they said that they're looking at around 50% of their referral, meet eligibility. And I think one, you know, one of the differences kind of between this year and last year too on, on the referrals is last year, we may have been a little more selective on the referrals that we've received last year because we looked at the data and it looked like if a kid was making progress on the data, that we may not have accepted the referral and tested. And that's not been the case this year. This year we've been, we've looked at if a teacher feels like a kid's needs to be tested, we've been testing the kid. Whether, whether the people that are trained to give the assessments believe that they suspect a disability or not. We just went off of teachers, teachers judgment. They felt the kid needed to be tested, so we've tested them, which may have also resulted in, like we had a gut feeling when we tested and they weren't going to qualify, but we did it just as a sake of the teacher felt like they needed to. And they, it may have happened that they qualified and they didn't. So I feel like we took more referrals this year and we tested more kids because we did take into account that teachers, the teacher voice and opinion that they thought a kid needed tested.
How many teachers do you have in your department?
Do I have in my department? For us, and teachers, there are 16 special education teachers.
Sixteen?
Yes. And that's counting speech.
How many students do those 16 teachers?
We have 172 students. And then our, with the speech people intervention, we see 86 students who do not have IEPs with speech intervention.
Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Ready to talk about money?
Well, yeah.
We will not do anything with this tonight. This is just the run-through of what the budget might look like. In June, we'll come back and I'll ask for approval of the budget at that point. So this is your rough draft of, of the May budget. So, background, again, we do this every year. The big portion of this is salaries and benefits, so we'll spend more time on that than the rest. Budget is an estimate based on history and future trends. We never know down to the penny exactly what we're going to get every year. So unlike your budget at home, there's a lot of variables in play. So we have to take all of that into account and do our best to make good estimates. We will make a conservative estimate because we do not want to go into debt and we don't want to bankrupt the district. It's a nearly $15 million budget, so keep that in mind when looking at numbers that certainly look large in my bank account. But again, a $15 million budget is a little different. Conservative recommendations and if you have questions, ask them at any- Conservative recommendations, and if you have questions, ask them at any time. If I can't answer them, we'll put them in a parking lot, and that's the beauty of having the June run-through, is we can talk about any of those questions that you might have. If you want to see something that's not up here, we can certainly do that. I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on some of this, and I know those of you that are on the budget committee, we talked about a lot of this already, but this is just a reminder on how public school financing works. We have four funds, Fund One, Fund Two, Three, and Four. The General Incident Fund, Special Revenue, that's the teachers' fund, is Fund Two. That's where the majority of our money is at. Our Debt Service Fund is Fund Three, which right now we have no debt. And then our Capital Projects Fund is Four. That's our other big one. If we want to do a project, that's where that money has to come from. So we have to be very specific about where we're putting our money. And of course, those come from revenues and expenditures. So just some historic overview of our district compared to the state. So on the left is ours, the Willow Springs are four, the right is the state. The majority of our revenue comes from the state. We have forty-six point two percent of our money from the state. Thirty-four point nine-three is local, and federal, we have eighteen point eighty-seven. So it matches up fairly well with the state, but we do receive more state funding. And the reason, of course, is our local tax levy sitting at two-seventy-five. That's going to minimize our local effort, and the state has to come in to pick up the rest of what we need. Assessed valuation, this chart's over the last five years, and you can see that our assessed valuation continues to go up and going up at a pretty healthy level. Of course, COVID spiked that assessed valuation up, and it's still rising. Now, when that stops is anybody's guess, but it will stop probably at some point, or at least level off. Ours and the state is right next to it. And then the local tax rate, you see our two-seventy-five. The total adjusted tax rate for the state, that's kind of an average, is at four point one seven three five. And that's a, I can't even imagine what you would do with that number. But that's nice, I like that. But we're at two-seventy-five, and the adjusted rate, and I'm not exactly sure how they get that down to three point four three, that may be the actual average. States are averaging about fifty cents in debt service. And again, we have zero, no capital projects right now. So those are good numbers to have at zero, especially if you're sitting at a two-seventy-five tax levy.
It's about what you have to do if you're setting it at two-seventy-five.
Yes, yes, that's well put, well put, right. You don't have a lot of options for you.
My house budget's looking.
You wait for things like the governor telling you you can have half a million. Expenditure per pupil, so this is just the cost of educating students. It costs us approximately eleven thousand five hundred and seventy-eight dollars to educate a student.
Is that annually per student, or?
Yes, okay.
Sorry.
I believe so, yes. And then this is our enrollment, and I know you get the enrollment every month, and there's a lot of fluctuation there. The only month that really counts for us and Desi is September. And that's for athletics, that's for money, it's for everything. The September count is what they go off of. Our September count, is it eleven ninety-five point nine-nine? I'm not sure how to get the point nine-nine, to be honest, but that's where we're at. So we're up a little bit in enrollment from last year. We've been pretty steady. We took the big COVID drop. Before COVID, we were twelve twenty-six, and then we dropped eighteen, or to eleven eighty-five. So that's that COVID dive that everyone had. And we bumped up a little since then, but, you know, clearly, we would still like to see that go up a little bit. So some kind of big, you know, high flyover type stuff here. The state budget, Senate Bill seven-twenty-seven, what that will do to our local budget. And like Mr. Schmidt said, the governor needs to sign the budget, but it's all been approved, and so we don't expect a lot of changes with that. It will, and this is very good, raise the SAT, the student adequacy target, to six thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars. That's what the state says you need to spend on each student, to educate that student. That has not gone up in a long time. I think I've got a slide coming, but I think it's been fifteen years since that's increased. So that is really good news, because as you saw, we get a lot of money from the state, and that's the formula, and this is the number they put in that state formula to determine how much money we can have.
Marty, how much did it raise from?
I've got it coming, not right off the top of my head, but it's coming in the next slide. They're gonna continue to fund transportation at seventy percent full funding. That's a little bit misleading, because Senate Bill seven-twenty-seven, we'll get to that, but the tax voucher thing in here, the first place they're gonna go to get money if they need it is transportation. So they're going to fund it with the proviso that they can go back and take it if they need it. They're gonna fund the baseline teacher grant at forty thousand, that's up from thirty-eight. So that's great for our new teachers. You can come in and you're gonna start at forty thousand, no matter where you actually fall on our salary schedule.
They're gonna fund it for?
A hundred percent for this year.
For one year?
And for, they say, as long as they can. And that's, we'll get to that, Matt, that's a.
They're gonna put it in law.
That's where there's a lot of, exactly, exactly. And then they're gonna give a hundred and nineteen million dollar increase in Prop C funding. We get a small cut of that, every district does. I'm not sure exactly how much that's gonna mean for us yet, but there will be an increase in Prop C. So a lot of this comes down to Senate Bill seven-twenty-seven. And if you saw the news, that was a big, big thing. Senate Bill seven-twenty-seven does a really nice thing, and it raises teacher pay. And we can all agree that teachers need more money, and we all want to raise teacher salaries. Politicians especially want to say they've raised teacher salaries. Unfortunately with this, there's several other things that it brings into the equation. We'll start with the positives, because we need to try to have a positive outlook, right? Early childhood ADA, so we have not been able to count preschool ADA. We now will, in law, we can count preschool ADA. So when we go back to the SAT, we can now count our preschool kids for that. Before that, we had to rely on federal funding for our preschool programs. So now we can go get some ADA for that, so that's good.
Does parents' teachers qualify on any level?
I'll have to check on that. State aid increases for five-day schools. That was another kind of battle in the legislature, between five-day schools and four-day schools. There was a big push to kind of outlaw a four-day school week. They didn't do that, but it now requires, in large cities like Springfield, St. Louis, and Kansas City, you have to have a vote by the people to move to a four-day school week. We do not here, but we do get an extra kickback for staying a five-day school week. And it's one percent, it'll be for FY twenty-six, it'll go two percent after that, and I think it's capped at that, but there will be a slight kickback. And again, that.
Two percent of what?
Our state funding formula.
And that's every year?
Every year.
Every year.
Every year. And then teacher recruitment, I mean, clearly, this is good. That's great to give an incoming teacher forty thousand dollars. They labeled it as it helps teacher recruitment and retention, but I'm gonna argue that it would not help retention, because you're compressing salaries. You've now got somebody that's just out of college making forty thousand dollars, and somebody that's working for five years making the same amount. That's not great for retention. It is good for recruitment, so I'll give them recruitment, but I'm not gonna give them retention. The negatives, financial uncertainty in teacher salary and formula changes for the future. That is a big problem, because right now, the state can fund, they put this in law. So we now cannot give teachers less than forty thousand dollars to start with. That doesn't mean your salary schedule has to show that, but you can't have a teacher that's making less than forty thousand dollars. And the state says, we're gonna give you this grant, but they have to approve it every year. And eventually, now that may be five years, that may be ten years, but at some point, the state is gonna say, we don't have the money to fund that anymore, so you're on your own. When that happens, a two-seventy-five tax levy, it's going to be a very hard thing to do. I mean, that's, we did the math, it's gonna, it would cost our district about a million dollars to put that in the salary schedule at forty thousand. So it's a future concern, it's not an immediate concern, because the state's gonna fund it, but at some point, somebody's gonna have to pay for that. And then the expansion of voucher tax credits statewide, that has been a thing in St. Louis and Kansas City for quite some time. If a student wants to attend a school, a non-public school, a charter school, they can do that and get a voucher from the state. There was a version of this bill that was gonna be a homeschool, that a homeschool could do a voucher tax credit. They did take that out. The homeschool coalitions were very much against that, so they took that out, but it still applies to like private schools and education. In that way, there would be a voucher, and that's, they're gonna come back and take the money from the formula to pay for those vouchers. So some problems there, and some things that we definitely, as we think about our budget, we have to be, we can be a little optimistic and happy that we're giving teachers more money, but we also need to be very cautious that at some point, somebody's gonna have to pay the bill for this.
Question on that. So are you saying a kid lives in Springfield, has been going to Kickapoo, and they decided they wanna go to Springfield Catholic? The state's gonna give them money to go to Springfield Catholic?
I believe so. Yeah. So there's, it's complex, and I'll be providing more on Senate Bill seven-twenty-seven. It's a huge, huge bill.
And what was it that you were, I can't remember the meeting, but like a homeschool kid can stay home and get a voucher from the state per child, correct?
But they.
Right, but they took that out. That was taken out, yeah.
So that, to clarify a little bit, maybe for what he's saying, the money goes to the student, or if they go to Kickapoo to Catholic, it goes to Catholic?
I think they've made it to where it's gonna go to the school, and not to the family. There was a version of the bill where it.
That's better, right?
Yes, that's better, that's better, yes. Yeah. An early draft had it going to the family, the homeschool proviso.
So when a Richard's kid comes here versus going there, will we, I mean, does it matter?
That will matter, because it's a public school to public school. It's just for a charter school or private school. Okay, I know that's a lot, but, and we're just getting started. We're just getting warmed up. So future trends and projections, this is the stuff we heard last year, okay? This is last year. Last year, they said there's gonna be no change in the SAT. The SAT hasn't increased in five years, so I was a little exaggerating with fifteen. It hasn't increased, but it's only increased four percent in the last fifteen years. That's where I was getting to fifteen years. So it's at six, right now, it's at sixty-three seventy-five. And the state last year had more money than they knew what to do with, which is why you see some of this kind of stuff. Now, the SAT will be sixty-seven sixty, three hundred and eighty-five dollars more per student, and it's proposed to rise to seventy-one forty-five in FY twenty-six. So that would be great. Those are good things for us. We want that SAT to be as high as it can, because that's the formula, that's where we're getting our state aid. Another positive for us is the free and reduced lunch thresholds drop significantly, which increases our weighted ADA. So we get ADA on every student, but we weighted ADA on subgroups like free and reduced lunch, like special education students, they cost more. The state feels like to educate those students, so we get a little bit more there, and those have increased. So when we think about all of that, and we start thinking about, okay, how much can we afford to pay our teachers? Because right now, our salaries and benefits, that is the biggest piece of the pie. We don't have a lot of huge projects going on. We do have some movement and some projects for sure, but this is the big thing. Non-certified positions, those are our bus drivers, our custodians, our maintenance staff. Received an extension last year from six to ten years, so we expanded their years of service, and they could rise with that. We had it frozen at six years, now it goes all the way to ten. This year, I would propose a one to two percent raise to mirror certified staffs, whatever we're doing for teachers. I would propose we do that for our certified, for our non-certified positions as well. Total increase for our non-certified would be fifteen thousand. It's about fifteen thousand to the budget per one percent that you wanna up it, okay? So that's just non-certified. Certified, we have to take into account where's our base at? I'm gonna show you that here in just a second. And then the steps on that salary schedule. We'll have a forty thousand dollar base, we won't actually have a forty thousand dollar base. That's where the grant will come in, and those teachers that are under forty K will get an extra check that will bump them up to that forty thousand mark. I'm gonna recommend a one or two percent increase on the base there. And again, if it's one percent, it's about forty-five thousand for certified staff, ninety if it's a two percent. So you're looking at about a forty-five thousand dollar jump with every percent for certified staff. If you combine those two together, you're looking at a one percent being about sixty thousand, and two percent, a hundred and twenty thousand. And then we can talk a little bit about an additional step. Last year, we did Masters plus nineteen. We could look at Masters plus twenty-one, or we could keep everything as it is now. So those are some things that we can think about. The other thing we have to think about is health insurance. That's a big piece that a lot of times, especially our newer teachers, don't quite understand the benefit that health insurance gives them. Since we joined the mask group, we're required by the group that all employees opt in for insurance purposes. This allows us to keep the best prices possible. FY twenty-five increase, and I've shared this with you, with two percent, which is, it's still an increase, but it's a really good trend in the right direction. We've had a seven percent increase, which is our max for, I can't, maybe, I don't know if you might remember, but I don't remember ever having a time that it wasn't a seven percent increase. So this is, this is good. That will account for twelve dollars a month. So we can keep the district portion, right now, we're at four hundred, we pay four hundred and sixty-nine of the six hundred and forty-five, or we can increase and get that twelve dollars a month so that they don't, our employees don't see an increase in their health insurance. As of now, the employee contribution will be a hundred and seventy-six dollars on the base line. Okay, this is our current salary schedule. I know you, those are a lot of little numbers. Thirty-five, three seventy-eight is our base, that's where we're at. And that, everything flows off of that base. So that's why when we say, if we were gonna actually make our base forty thousand dollars, it would flow through this whole schedule and cost us a million dollars extra. Right, right, on top of what we're already doing, so you can see the issue.
Marty, can you maybe get to this there? But on the forty thousand, the increase there, when it went to thirty-eight thousand, I think it was about, what, twenty-two or twenty-one?
Right after.
Staff members?
Yeah.
That went through that? Do you have any idea how many staff members this, is it about the same number, or do you?
It's about the same number, I mean, I'd have to look, but there's not a huge, we don't have a lot. And that's really, you know, it's not a huge, and it's a hundred percent by the state, so that's great. But it's, that's not the part that really gets, it's the, when you would spread it throughout, that would really handcuff us.
Well, that, you gotta, by our schedule, you have to be on your eighth year to make forty thousand.
Right, yeah, yeah. And that's, that's just kind of a gut punch for staff that have been working here for a while, and so, unfortunately. So FY twenty-five salary schedule, one percent would be three hundred and forty-four dollars on the base, so that thirty-five thousand number that I showed you. Two percent would be six hundred and eighty-eight dollars on the base. Extra steps, we do those in increments of six seventy-six. So if we wanted to put an extra step in at twenty-one, that would be a six hundred and seventy-six dollar raise for that person that's on that step, and then an insurance raise of twelve dollars a month. My recommendation for you guys to consider, and we can certainly talk some more about it, and then we'll come back in June, but if you're wanting to know where I fall right now, I would be very conservative, unfortunately. I would one percent raise for all employees, and I would also like to see us cover the insurance raise.
And hold on the step?
And hold on the step at this time.
So us to take the twelve dollars, do you know what that, what does that figure out to be? Did you say that a long ago?
I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, let's look back.
No, I'm sorry.
Thanks for trying to help, Scott, but I can definitely get that to you in the Bay Report on Friday.
I would be curious what the impact of the step would be as well.
Yeah, we can do that.
How many teachers it would influence and?
And also, how many, the, like, when we did the thirty-eight K, how many teachers that, or how many people in our district that affects?
And you said this time, that's funded a hundred percent. And you said this, this, this time, that's funded 100% from the state. Last time, it was 75%.
Uh, let's see, three years ago, when they first started it, it was 75%. So we had to eat some of that. But the last, I know last year, and maybe the year before, it's been at 100%.
An actual 100%?
Actual, actual, yeah, not a 70.
Not a transportation 100%.
So you're, you're saying 1%? Your, your recommendation's 1% of the insurance and the extra stuff, that's your...
I, I've not made a recommendation on the extra stuff. I will look into that, for sure.
I just want to know the impact.
Yeah, absolutely. We could do that. Our next steps, again, this is the rough draft, and this is, this is good. That's why I want to kind of plant the seeds and have you guys think about that, continue to have conversations, continue to send me thoughts. Final draft budget will be presented in June. That's when I'll ask for your approval of what we're going to do. And then any amendments we need to make, we can do that in July, and then we'll send out, everybody's got their contracts, but we'll send out that second contract whenever we decide exactly what the salaries and benefits package is going to be. All right.
Thanks for going through that.
You bet. Career ladder plan. Career ladder, it's been a really nice bonus for our, our staff, and allows us to get a lot of volunteer hours, and a lot of staff taking care of things for us. We need to approve that every year. There's been no changes to our career ladder program. That's where the state sets that at. We, the state takes care of another percentage. 60? I want, that sounds right. And if you'll remember back when they reintroduced career ladder, when they got rid of career ladder, Dr. Hutzel at the time kept a local career ladder called TIPSA. And so we still had that budgeted every year. And he didn't know it at the time, but that really helped us now, because that budget for TIPSA was just what we needed to finish up what the state gave us. So really, we've always had the career ladder budget in there, so, and there's been no change really to that, and we just need to approve that for another year. I know our teachers very much appreciate it, it pays out in May, so they all get a little bonus, bonus check in May, so it's a nice program.
What's the, so many years by each stage that you have to be in the district?
Yeah, and it's in the, I can't remember off the top of my head, but yeah.
You can't just decide you're going to be in stage 3.
No, no, you, yeah, it, it works out from, from, and that, that's, yeah, that's an area where compression is not a factor in career ladder. You still have to kind of earn your, earn your time a little bit. So I'll be asking your approval of that tonight, and you have those, that plan in your folder. Last time, we talked about advertising on campus, and you asked that I go back and, and come up with some thoughts and ideas from our administrators. So our admin team met, and we recommend continuing to seek advertising sources for revenue that provide needed equipment or services. Administration will continue to implement a process of approval for said advertising, so it doesn't become tacky. Examples, Bear Media is a really great example of advertising that I didn't think of that night, but Mrs. Lee had an email ready for me the next, the next morning. And I appreciate that, because we do live stream, we do ads on our live streams, putting advertising in programs for sporting events. I mean, those are, those are really easy ways to generate some extra funding that really doesn't take away at all from the athletic experience or the educational experience. Designated areas at sports venues, we've talked about, you know, at Polinsky, making an area on, you know, the fencing there, where we can, we can put up some advertising, but not, you know, not going crazy with it. And then even sponsorships like Hoop Queen, Prom, you know, some of those events that, that we can get sponsorships for. The big thing is the administration feels like, that they want to be very cautious and careful about not oversaturating, but at the same time, if there's something that we can do to take advantage of, of an opportunity, we want to do that.
Any questions?
Okay. About the last thing I've got. Policy committee meeting, we need to have a, a policy committee meeting. That's Debbie, Coach Colley, and Adam. I've got a couple of dates there, you don't have to tell me tonight, but if you could let me know which of those two dates is good for you, or if neither one is good for you, I'll try to find another date.
28.
May 28th, Tuesday, or Monday, June 3rd. Debbie, you said you could not...
May 28th is a Thursday.
It's a Tuesday.
I can do the 28th.
Okay.
She can do what?
The 28th, are you good on that?
At what time is?
4:00.
4:00. 4:00.
May 28th at 4:00. We've got some policies, not the, the amount we had last time, but a few policies to go over, and we'll bring that to the board in the, the June meeting. I'll have Ms. Robson.
All right. Comments from guests? I think it's just you, are you a guest?
This is a suit.
Okay, items for action. I would receive a motion to approve the clear ladder, our career ladder plan as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Okay, you're going to have to help me with this.
That's fine. Put it up there for you.
Okay, I would receive a motion to open bidding on two district trailers as surplus property.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Good. All right, I would receive a motion to move to executive session.
Hold on.
Take a vote.
Aye.
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 I just got motion, who was it?
Debbie's motion, and Adam's seconded it.
Okay.
...